Great, welcome everyone to the special session of council on the sixteenth day of July twenty twenty five for the town of Greater Napanee. We'll call the meeting to order. I just want to remind those folks that are here this morning that this evening's meeting is going to be live streamed via our YouTube channel. And so, uh, welcome to the folks that are here this morning. Welcome to those that are watching at home this morning and welcome to those that will watch us on later dates. So having said that, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with our opening proceedings, which is the playing of our national anthem. Uh, thank you, folks. Uh, we'll now look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Uh, moved by Councilor Norrie, seconded by Councilor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure or pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. First item up for discussion is the County of Lennox and Addington litigation response. And Mr. Grant, are you going to speak to that first?
Uh, thank you, your worship, and through, uh, Mr. Mayor, to members of council. Um, the, uh, council will recall that, um, a few weeks ago, we did receive a letter, um, um, uh, indicating that we would face litigation if we did not cease and desist using an encampment protocol map. Uh, I'm pleased to say that, uh, we're now at a place where I kind of wish we had started, but, um, you know, there, uh, we did receive, uh, correspondence from the County of Lennox and Addington. It is their intention, uh, to pursue their own bylaw. Um, you know, and, uh, for, for background, um, you know, the, we did send a letter, um, to the County of Lennox and Addington following our last meeting. Um, we, we offered to assist them in their bylaw. Um, I'm happy to share, um, that we've already off made that offer, uh, to the Chief Administrative Officer of the County, uh, as well as, uh, the head, uh, Administrative Head of Palace. Um, and, uh, we sent a note to the County of Lennox and Addington, uh, as, uh, they are identified by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs as the Service Manager accountable for service delivery. And we also, council will recall, uh, sent a note, uh, to Palace, uh, and the mayor sent one to the Palace Chair as, uh, the operational service provider. Um, the, uh, in the letter that, um, we sent to Palace, uh, council will recall that we asked that, um, a housing and homelessness strategy required by, um, Ontario legislation be developed, uh, and that public consultation, uh, with the community occur. And, um, I can confirm, um, that, uh, we have not yet heard back from, from Palace, but, uh, we look forward to hearing from them. And, uh, they also have, uh, yet to send the agenda for the Housing Summit, but we look forward to receiving that. Um, and, uh, while I'm not sure the date of, uh, the County of Lennox and Addington's consultations with their upcoming bylaw, what council will see in my report is I'm recommending, uh, that we offer use of our facilities in the community, uh, and that council authorized staff to waive any fees that we might charge, um, so that, uh, when they engage in consultation, as we engage in consultation, that they can do so with whatever facilities, uh, at our disposal that they feel will, will fit their plan. Um, you know, in, in closing, I know that, uh, council and staff look forward to, to putting this unfortunate incident behind us. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I know that, uh, you know, staff are, are very much looking forward to proceeding forward with our partners, um, you know, uh, with, with mutual respect and, and mutual support. Um, with that in mind, um, we are pleased to, uh, assist with any upcoming consultations, uh, bylaw development or activities with the summit. Um, any of the ongoing efforts of the, you know, provincially funded and mandate organizations responsible for housing and homelessness. Um, I've attached correspondence, uh, for council's review, uh, to my report. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Grant. Uh, is there any questions or comments for Mr. Grant with respect to his report or the presentation before us this morning? Uh, Councilor Hicks.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm happy to, uh, to inquire about that housing study. Um, although I've not heard from them directly, I, I did see, uh, in media comments that they are working on a ten-year plan. Um, I would assume that that particular study is a part and parcel of that, but, um, I can certainly ask for an update on that issue and, and, and the plan overall at the Housing Summit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any other comments or questions before we look for a motion? Councilor Norrie?
Um, just, I'm pleased to see the direction we're heading. I want to thank County Council for the decision they made to speed this up. They were the ones that, from my understanding, took the decision to save the Napanee taxpayers some money because whatever money was spent on legal came out of the Napanee taxpayer, because that's where the county money comes from, or some of it. And I was against it first, giving them anything free, but if we charge them, then it's the Dapany taxpayer that's getting hit again. I don't think the county understands that, but that's a whole nother subject. So I want to thank you and I will support this as well, reluctantly, but I will.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Norrie. Is there anything else? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Grant. I, uh, I too am going to support, uh, the motion or the staff recommendation that, that says come out of this. Uh, I, I find it quite interesting in the second paragraph, the letter that we got from the county. Um, I find that verbiage somewhat interesting. However, you know what? We, we've got to move on from this. We have to work together to try and resolve a multifaceted problem that exists in every municipality in this country and probably in this continent. So, um, if we don't, we're going to continue to spin our wheels and, and the people that we're supposed to be representing are not going to be represented. So, um, having said that, um, I'm grateful that we can move on from this. I'm sure that we will move on from this in a positive way. And, uh, let's roll our sleeves up and get back to work. So, uh, we do have a staff recommendation that council received for information in the report providing an overview of the County of Lennox and Addington's response to housing and homelessness planning requests from the town. That council authorized staff to offer a fee waiver on town facilities to allow the County of Lennox and Addington to conduct consultation, public consultation with Greater Napanee residents for their own encampment legislation at no cost. And moved by Deputy Mayor Cowver, seconded by Councilor Hicks. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed. Motion's carried. Next matter, differences between transitional housing and rooming housing. Uh, I see Mr. Nobes and Mr. Natton coming up to the front. So whenever you folks get settled in, the floor will be yours.
Thank you. And through your worship to council, I'll start us off and then I'll be handing things over to Mr. Natton, uh, momentarily. So council asked for this report at the June twenty-fourth meeting, uh, as a request for further information, uh, related to an inquiry from council related to transitional housing, uh, in a broad sense. Uh, so this was prompted as staff and members of council were receiving numerous, um, inquiries and concerns regarding the establishment of a new transitional, uh, house at two-two-three Center Street in the wake of a tragic incident that occurred at one fifty-nine John Street. So Dave is here, uh, with me today to speak to the details of the report, uh, and I'm here to assist, uh, him and council, uh, as necessary. So Dave will go over the differences between a boarding or rooming house and transitional, uh, housing units, uh, how each can be regulated respectively, and the details surrounding how these land uses are enabled through provincial and town regulations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Nan.
Thank you. So to, um, thank you for that. I'll start by just going into some of the details related to the high, high points as provided through the staff report. So, um, with respect to a rooming house, which is defined as a boarding house or lodging house through our zoning bylaw, um, these are defined as, you know, four guest room, up to four guest room homes that are intended to accommodate, um, a non-traditional housekeeping unit of up to eight people. Um, these uses are only permitted in the residential type five zone, uh, which is important to note. And there are performance standards which we apply to these uses through the zoning bylaw to regulate them and ensure their functionality long-term in the community. And achieving and establishing new rooming houses would require zoning bylaw amendment, which would be subject to review of the application merits. So thinking of things like the property, the area, how much lot coverage, parking, the like. Um, a transitional housing unit, um, kind of standing in opposition is defined through the zoning bylaw as a short-term group living arrangement in a single housekeeping unit of up to eight people with onsite access to support services. Um, this is to be occupied in one single detached dwelling or half a single detached dwelling. So it's important to recognize the intent is that it's functionally and within one building. Um, and they're permitted within all residential type categories as well as the rural and hamlet zones. So any zone category basically that permits residential uses within the town that is not subject to potential or known servicing constraints or hazards, uh, this type of housing unit is permitted. Um, it's important to recognize that the reason that this is permitted is because the transitional housing units are intended to accommodate a at-risk population or vulnerable sector. Um, people who are in need of support services to meaningfully integrate and reintegrate back into the community through receiving those services. Sorry, there. Um, so again, the rooming house as described, so one of the key differences there to, to keep in mind is it's more of a flexible accommodation model where people enter into leasing arrangements, um, on their own accord and merit. Um, they could do so because they have, you know, shared professional or personal connections. Um, so student housing could come to mind or seasonal workers is more of a traditional form where lodging houses with accommodated meals and so forth would be, um, part of that. Um, a transitional housing unit is staff understand, um, persons who are situated within these units are done so, um, um, through governing agencies or bodies, um, through registered lists, as I understand. Uh, moving to the regulatory framework, just some highlights there. So again, the rooming house, um, they are governed through the zoning bylaw, um, which is important to note. Achieving new ones in the community would be subject to staff review of an application and a decision by council. Um, so things like locational criteria would come up. Um, rooming houses, um, may also be subject to a municipal bylaw. These bylaws can ensure things like licensing to comply with zoning, building and property standards, fire, health-related aspects, uh, requirements for onsite amenities, the number of bathrooms per, uh, rooms that we'd require, the facility management, these types of things, as well as occupancy limits. Um, transitional housing units are not governed functionally through the zoning bylaw, um, in a similar way to a rooming house. Um, and those are for the reasons listed. One thing that's not alluded to in the staff report that was located through research done after is, um, transitional housing units can be subject to municipal licensing. This licensing is, um, very scoped, so it is only, um, to be shared and kept within, um, the municipality. It's not to be, uh, publicly shared, uh, register or record, but, uh, things like the owner licensee and agent and, um, I believe occupancy are, are kind of the strict matters that we can request confirmation of through a, uh, an annual license. Um, there was a few more details contained within the port, report, but, um, it may be, uh, advantageous to pass it back over to council. Let's see if there's any questions or comments that we could speak to directly. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Uh, thanks, Dave, and thanks the work that you and Michael have done on this. I know it's, uh, it took me the better part of the afternoon yesterday to try and get my head around it. So, uh, is there any questions or comments, Deputy Mayor Cowherd?
Uh, thank you. Through, through your worship, Dave. Um, you're talking about licensing of, of transitional housing, um, but we wouldn't be able to license the rooming houses. Is that correct?
Uh, thank you for the question through you. So we can license the rooming houses through the municipal bylaw, as I understand it. So, um, yes, we can license those as well.
Okay. I just misunderstood that. And so if we were to provide licensing, if we were to do a bylaw and say you've got to be licensed, um, would the town then be liable for any mishaps that may happen because we licensed it, we're allowing it to happen, or is there any way to kind of protect us that way?
Through your worship, I'll, I'll address that question. Um, so it would depend on what elements, uh, we would be licensing. So through the licensing bylaw for a rooming house, for example, if we are looking at, uh, specific items that require, uh, detailed inspection work, so, uh, fire and life safety components that could expose us to a little bit more liability rather than if we were just taking a register of where these properties are in contact. that could expose us to a little bit more liability rather than if we were just taking a register of where these properties are and contact information. So, uh, it would depend on council's appetite to, um, get into the details, I'll say, of licensing versus just taking a registry through the form of a license, where we're, uh, looking at more items in more detail. It would, it would open us up to potential liability. But we would be, uh, covered through our general errors and omissions, uh, coverage if something were to happen in that instance. Ideally not, but, um, I would say in a broad sense, the more we ask for, the more we look at, the more liability that we would be exposing ourselves to. And that's only related to rooming houses. We can't get into that level of detail with a transitional house.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I think you've got all my questions answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowher. I'll go to Councilor Norrie and then I'll go to Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Michael. Um, if we were to license, excuse me, a transitional house, would that give our bylaw a little more teeth to keep an eye on it? I'm not saying harass or anything, just so we know what's going on.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, to council. So I would say, um, the bylaw itself wouldn't give us any additional, uh, abilities to require remediation of, of certain issues that might, uh, be present beyond what we can, um, take care of today outside of such bylaw and licensing regime. For example, fire code would be applicable. Um, you know, fire department would be able to conduct routine inspections. You know, we wouldn't be able to go every day. Uh, that would then be, um, a little bit over the top. But yes, we, uh, it would at least give us a greater lens on where these, um, uh, buildings are located in, in the community and, uh, give, um, the town the ability to, uh, have a line of sight on when we should be doing those routine inspections on which properties in, in particular. Um, I think it would just give a more fulsome understanding of where, where each of these types of uses are located so that we have a, a fulsome list.
Thank you, Councilor Norrie, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, um, Michael, I, I realize we can't necessarily dictate how a transition house is run, but I'm just looking at, um, on, on the second page, I guess it is, "A transitional housing unit is defined through zoning bylaws two dash two-two as a short-term group living arrangement in a single housekeeping unit of up to eight persons with access to onsite support services." So, can we, uh, word that, that it has to be 24-hour access to services? Like, I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned about this issue about no supervision in the building when you've got at least eight people living, they're, um, living in a communal sort of a, uh, a, a living arrangement. I, I know the, the, the tragic problem over on John Street when it happened. Prior to that, a few months before that, I actually had some complaints from residents and I was over in that area. I actually parked across the street and I was there for like an hour, an hour and a half. And I counted 18 people going in the building. So, like obviously, there shouldn't have been that many people in it. Plus there was residents, I'm assuming, in there. So probably, I'm assuming there was 20-some people in there. I, I, I'm just thinking that 24-hour supervision, or at least night supervision, should be required in a setup like that. And I, I don't know, I, I, I know Palace don't provide that, but, um, is there any way we can, like any kind of a, a, a regulation on that at all in our bylaw?
Through your worship, I'll, uh, I'll let Mr. Nanton, uh, start to address that and I'll add some comment, uh, towards the end.
Thank you, through you. So our zoning bylaw is, to speak to operational commitments as required through our definition is not something we're going to be able to put in there that we could defend. Should, should we find it to, you know, in operation, say, um, if Palace locally was operating and we were saying, hey, like we found you're not in compliance with a zoning bylaw because we have a requirement that you're providing onsite support services in addition to supervision. Our ability to, to regulate or impose restrictions on how a transitional house is operated is, is, is outside of our, it's outside of our scope, unfortunately, at the town level.
I'll, I'll just add a little bit, uh, more as well. So from a, from a fire code perspective, the fire department would be able to conduct, uh, with, with a register and knowing where these properties are. Routine inspections and inspections upon complaints are, are, um, you know, over occupancy type complaints, uh, are addressed as immediate threats to life potentially, given that a building may not have the necessary life safety components for too many people in that building. So the fire department has the ability to enter into those buildings without warrants in those instances. So, so the fire department really does have a lot of, uh, teeth, I'll say. Even in the absence of being able to license, um, those specific components around 24 supervision, we would, we would have a level of control to ensure the safety of individuals within that building from that perspective. The operations side, um, that would certainly be, uh, the onus of the operator, I would say, to ensure that their premises are operating within the confines of the zoning bylaw, which eight persons is the limit, uh, that can, that can be residing in that building. So, um, there's certainly a, an onus on the operator, I would say, in those instances, where, where there may be a known, uh, exceedance of occupancy limits outside of what's allowed under zoning, outside of what's allowed under fire code. So, uh, upon those instances, uh, coming to the municipality's attention, the fire department would be in contact with property owner, operator, et cetera, and making them well aware of those, of those issues. But unfortunately, it's not something that we could, uh, truly dictate through a licensing, uh, bylaw related to a transitional house specifically. Uh, but I, I see Mr. Grant would like to, uh, add some comment.
So thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think the other thing that we can add is with a licensing, um, regime, if you will, that can be accompanied by education to both the property owner, uh, and the operator, uh, of a transitional home. So with the, the case of John Street, we know it was over capacity. We know. Um, and on the evening, uh, of, of the unfortunate event, I believe that, uh, when the fire chief was on scene, he, he was informed that they were aware that there was over 20 people, um, in the building. And so I think that, you know, knowing where they are, uh, being able to provide education about what the fire code is, uh, being able to provide education about occupancy limits, um, just to make sure that everybody understands. Um, and then what we're going to do if, if we receive, uh, information that things are over occupancy, that, you know, we, we have the ability to go and inspect. And as, as, uh, General Manager Nobes has said, we wouldn't go every day, but it can be complaint-driven. But I, I think having an awareness of where they are and making sure that everyone understands what the rules are. Cause I'm not 100% sure that was clear, um, before, and I, I think hopefully it's clearer now. But I, I think that's how we can meet our obligation to contribute to the safety of, of these facilities, which, you know, um, are, are in the community and will continue to be so.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Would, uh, go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, gentlemen, for all your answers. Um, I, I, I was concerned more, not necessarily for just the safety aspect of the building itself, and although, you know, it is certainly a concern. But myself as a war, as a ward counselor, and if I get calls from residents complaining that, you know, uh, loud noise, music blaring, uh, people camped out front on the lawn smoking dope or whatever it is they're smoking, um, and people can't enjoy, you know, uh, being in the background of real estate. Residents are entitled to quiet enjoyment of the residence. So that was the issue that I was trying to address. The particular night I'm talking about that I was parked across from that one on John Street. But, uh, but, but I appreciate everybody's answers to that. And, uh, I, I still think the supervision part of it is, is a big question. And I, I realize that Palace probably isn't going to go there, but I think if they really want to do something about it, that that's the problem we need to address is supervision. Cause you can't just go there once or twice a week in the daytime and not know what's going on at night. And just, you know, anyway, just my thoughts. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Bill, and, and you're, you've got my mind going. So you've opened up a whole bunch of things I'm going to probably ask. So, uh, thank you for that. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowher.
Uh, thank you through your worship. Um, Michael, these, uh, the people that operate the transitional homes as well as the rooming houses, are they required to have a business license?
Through your worship, uh, no, they don't. So the municipality does not issue general business licenses for commercial establishments. What, if council, um, uh, provides direction to staff to, um, bring forward a licensing bylaw, that, that would be effectively the license, but they don't need a business license specifically from the town.
Okay, thank you. So we have no idea if they even have proper insurance coverage for, for such a, an incident.
Through your worship, so it's not a requirement of the, of the municipalities to hold specific types of insurance. So that would be, uh, the onus of, uh, either the property owner or, uh, the operator or a combination of the two. It's unclear to staff at this point, uh, those requirements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, go ahead, Michael.
And, and through your worship to council, uh, just hearing the discussion around the concern around, uh, regarding 24 supervi- 24-hour supervision. If, if council would like, uh, uh, council could direct staff to convey those concerns directly to the operator of these facilities. So, um, not, not necessarily being, uh, you know, thou shall, but we can certainly, uh, if you wish, convey those concerns and that recommendation on to the operator, potentially at the housing summit or separately from the housing summit. It certainly is a, a, a point of interest in the community in a broad sense, uh, both from council and from residents that staff have heard from. So if council wishes, we can, we can certainly, um, do a little bit more, uh, correspondence with, with Palace, uh, regarding that matter.
Thank, thank you, Michael, and, uh, sorry, is there, is there, go ahead, Ange.
Thank you, through your worship. Um, I, I'm going to go back to rooming houses just for a minute because I did have a question about that. Do we know how many rooming houses are currently located in Greater Nappany?
Through worship, from memory, thinking of strictly R5 zone properties, we're probably in the 10 to 15 ballpark. I, it's not 50, it's not 2, it, it's in that sort of general range.
And what is the ratio of bodies to bathrooms? Is it four people to a three-piece bath? Is that how it works? I'm thinking a family of four might only have one bathroom and that works for a family of four. Would the same apply to a rooming house? Like, how is all of that determined? I just, if I may, just not ask a question, but offer a comment. Short-term accommodation is one thing. Rooming houses, these, these are members of the community. Whether they're here for six months or six years in a rooming house, um, I think they're owed the comfort of knowing that where they're living is safe and secure and that these operators of rooming houses, because it is a business, um, I, I'm in favor of them being licensed and having the, uh, fire department doing a check to make sure that, you know, there's no open elements. There's no, it's not over capacity, that sort of thing. So I just wanted to, to offer that. On the subject of transitional housing, I couldn't find anywhere where Palace actually stated that when someone moves out of transitional housing. So this, this is a case of they have gone through perhaps a rehabilitation program or they're legitimately like homeless. They've lost a job and this is a transitional house to get them back into the housing market such as it is. I'd be interested to know how many people move from a transitional situation to a rooming house. Because probably quite often a rooming house is all that they can afford. They're not able to afford $1,200 or $1,500 a month for an apartment. So I would like that question asked of Palace. Because I see that we have 23 transitional housing rooms in Lennox and Addington, uh, specifically in Greater Nappany. They're all located in Greater Nappany. And I don't know if that includes the one with eight people on, on Center Street. But I do think it would be a good idea to have them licensed, both the rooming houses and the transitional situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. Deputy Mayor Cowher.
Uh, through your worship, uh, just, just a comment to Ange there. My understanding is they go into the transitional housing and they, they get the help that they require, so on and so forth. And then as units become available in the low-income county-run apartments and buildings, they then transfer into those, was my understanding of how most of that worked. Now there are some that, uh, they're, they're unhoused. They can't be, they go into transitional housing, they destroy things, so on and so forth. So there is that, that area as well that needs to be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowher. And I think the, the rooming houses, just by pure definition, really aren't designed to, the transitional housing isn't designed to go from transitional housing to, to, to rooming houses or boarding houses because, uh, the whole concept of rooming houses or boarding houses is for short, short-term accommodations. So if they are doing that transition, it's probably not right. They should be transitioning from the transitional house to a, uh, type of housing, the way that Deputy Mayor has described, so.
Through you, um, and in response, but there's not enough units. And that's, that's where, that's where the issue is, is that there's not enough county units geared to income, whatever the phrase of the day is, low income. So where do they go? They can't stay in transitional housing forever. So I, I would like to know as a member of council for Greater Nappany, when someone has successfully managed to integrate, if you will, through the transitional housing pro- process, where do they go when they're done? Are they back in a tent somewhere or are they actually going to a rooming house? Because there's not enough units.
The, I, I, and, and I'm sure that the County of Lennox and Addington can provide those numbers for you. And, and, and not all that are in transitional housing actually end up in, in, um, government-assisted housing. So it's just the reality of it. But I'm, I'm quite positive the County of Lennox and Addington can probably provide that, those statistics for you, Ange. Um, is there anything else before I open up a Pandora's box here? Seeing none, I'm sure that there will be questions after I'm done, but we talked about transitional housings. And, and in a couple of paragraphs, I know I've talked to both Mike and Dave about this. It talks about licensed service providers or agencies, opera, who operate housing units. Operate is, is, is a really neat word. Operate would suggest that they're the ones who are responsible for this. Can we get any idea as to, so if we license, um, transitional housing, if we license boarding houses, if we license group homes, it suggests that the licensed service provider, who would that be? Is that the owner of the building? Is that the, uh, is that Palace? Is that the County of Lennox and Addington? Do we have those answers or, uh, or is it some entity that we just don't know who it is?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll get us started and then turn it over, um, to Mr. Nanton. So I think just to clarify, I believe what, uh, the mayor is, is asking, if I'm not mistaken, is who is accountable for the operations of a transitional house? I believe that's the question. Sorry, is, uh, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I thought I'd said it clear enough, but evidently I didn't. So operate, like I say, if we want to pull the definition of operate out of Webster's dictionary, I'm sure that responsibility shows up somewhere in that definition, so.
Through your worship, um, we'd have to do a little bit more exploration regarding that. However, I can note that, uh, regarding 223 Center Street, uh, so there was a, a building permit applied for, uh, to renovate 223 Center Street, uh, prior to the work that's ongoing to, um, facilitate the transitional hu- housing unit. Through staff's, uh, due diligence during the building permit review process, uh, we inquired with the applicant, who was the property owner, uh, who would be operating the facility? Because the application noted that it was renovations to support a, uh, new transitional house within the community. So we inquired who, who's, who's providing the services and Palace, uh, provided the response that they would be running the facility. They didn't say specifically operate, but they said Palace would run it and provide the onsite services. So I would be inclined to assume that the operator should, uh, should be, uh, license, should be the license holder, should be the one being held accountable in this, in this instance. But staff would need to gain a little bit more clarity to provide a, a concrete answer. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Nanton if he has anything further to add.
Thank you, and through you, um, just to paraphrase what I've read from the, um, relevant sections of the municipal act that allow us to do the licensing, um, it's specified- um, it specifies that the information that is to be provided, uh, is the contact information for the licensee or applicant. And to me, that implies that through that process, we'd have clarity on who the licensed agency is. Um, that permits the transitional house from operating, who's the, who's actually providing onsite services and access there too. So hopefully that helps clarify.
Uh, great. Thanks, gentlemen, and I I know that I asked a question that I was somewhat rhetorical because I don't think you had the answers to it, but, uh, I think it's a question that has to be asked because to to Counselor Martin's point, uh, I I agree with him, this is that, um, the definition of providing services is pretty loosey-goosey. Right? Um, you can say you're providing services, but what do those services look like? Is it once a day, once a week, once a year, once an hour? You know, it it's, it's, it's out there, right? So, um, you know, we, w- we, we had an incident in this municipality, which was probably the worst incident you're gonna see with respect to these types of, uh, these types of, uh, housing. And 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 it was horrible. It it was, you know, no one, no one who is living in their private space should have been murdered. And 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 so it it it's absolutely insane, and 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 maybe I'm a little bit offside here, and and I'm more than willing to admit it if I am, but, uh, I mean, this whole thing reeks of a coroner's inquest. It really does. And I know that a coroner's inquest, it's not, it wouldn't be a mandatory one, but, uh, man, oh, man, like I say, we, we don't want this to happen again, and we need to get some answers on this thing. And if we don't get these answers, uh, there's a good chance this could happen again. And that's, I I mean, Counselor Martin sat and watched with his own two eyes. People going in and out of these facilities, probably after four o'clock when everybody's gone home, a- and there just doesn't seem to be very little control, and if any, I think, right? So, um, I apologize, uh, for maybe getting on a soapbox and preaching here, but, uh, um, you know, a- 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 and on the other side of that coin, you know, everyone deserves to have some type of housing, but they, the housing that they get should be safe. And that's the problem, I think, that we're seeing here. So, um, once again, I apologize for getting on a soapbox, and if I've created or or generated any of their conversations, I'm more than happy to hear them. But, uh, I I agree with Counselor Hicks is that, you know, you know, very basic first step is, uh, uh, is is the licensing them, because at least with the licensing aspect of, we get notified where they're gonna be, right, before they get there. So I I I think that's an, you know, it's, again, we're doing, you know what, we're, we're doing open-heart surgery here with a mallet and a butter knife. And that's just the reality of what's going on here. So, um, but we gotta start somewhere because we don't do something. Things will spiral out of control. So go ahead, Michael.
Uh, through your worship, uh, and just, just to provide some additional information, not, uh, not sure if this will help at all, but just for council's gen- general awareness, um, under both the fire code and the building code, property standards, um, a- aspects that the municipality enforces, any, any issues that, uh, or or any, um, enforcement action that the municipality would be taking would be against the property owner uh, and potentially the occupant, uh, in a certain instance, if it's, if it's warranted. Um, so in in this instance, it's, it's difficult to say if, um, you know, Palace is truly the operator or the, the, uh, property owner is the operator. But just for council's awareness, we, we enforce against the property owner. We're unsure if there'd be a transfer of liability agreement between the property owner and Palace for certain aspects that might come up, uh, re- related to enforcement or or issues that may occur. Uh, but just for council's awareness, that, uh, the municipality enforces against the property owner, um, in this, in this case.
Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Uh, thank you through your worship. The biggest problem or biggest hurdle I see is the property owner may or may not even live here. And if he has, he or she has a, uh, a eight-person rooming house, we'll say, right? But there's no control if those eight people move in another eight of their friends and so on and so forth. And that's how we end up with these, these huge numbers. There's gotta be a way of trying to figure out a way to control that. Um, and and licensing, I think, is a, is a good s- step forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to to pick up on your comment from before, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'm not aware of of, um, any inquest that may have happened, but we can certainly ask the questions of of what reviews were done, um, you know, after the unfortunate incident and and the arson that occurred and and the murder that occurred. We can certainly see what review was done and what steps are in place to ensure that the, the number of occupants within a facility um, are known and adhered to. Um, I'm confident, um, that the, the operators of the facility have have done a review following that incident. Um, I haven't seen anything published, but we can certainly ask those questions. Uh, and that, you know, uh, that will inform any of the education materials that we have, because the lessons that they've learned under this unfortunate incident can certainly be passed on to anyone else, uh, that might, uh, purchase a property for this purpose. Um, so, uh, if it's the will of council, we can certainly inquire as to the, 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 the nature of the re- the review that was conducted and the findings that were, that were found.
I, I, I think that's the very minimum we need to do, Mr. Grant. If, if you can sense frustration in my voice, you're probably right in the fact that we, as a town council, have been tasked to manage a situation that we just don't have the tools to manage. And 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 from our discussion today, I think we're hearing that we've got yet another situation that we have virtually no control over, but we're, we're being asked to manage it via, via our, our building codes, via our fire department, via, um, whatever tools that we have, and 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 these tools are rudimentary at best. But we have very little say or input into how we can provide a safe community for, for our citizens. And to me, that's frustrating. We're being dictated to as to what we're going to do and when we're going to do it, and if we don't like it, it's too bad. And I just don't think that's fair. So I, once again, will apologize for soapboxing a little bit here, but it it's, that's the reality of this thing. So, um, once again, I agree that I think licensing is is, is an extremely good first step. And and with all due respect, maybe the only step that we have at this point. So, um, I'll leave it at that for now anyways. Sorry, uh, council, is, is there anything else, Counselor Hicks?
Thank you through you, your worship. So I've been listening and not doing much talking, unusually, no. Uh, so just for clarity, the local service manager for all housing-related issues is Lennox and Addington County, correct?
Uh, Mr. Grant, uh, go ahead. Uh, so, um, I'll answer the question to the, to the best of my knowledge. Um, when I look at, um, the, the County of Lennox and Addington's budget documents, I look at the recent housing RFP, and I look at the list of service managers identified, um, by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. The County of Lennox and Addington is identified as the service manager. Um, and I believe they also receive money from the provincial government. And and my understanding from the legislation is that makes them accountable to make sure the service is delivered. And and I believe that the service provider, uh, would be, would be Palace, who provides services for the County of Lennox and Addington and Prince Edward.
So, so service provider slash operator. The, I, to me, those two terms are interchangeable, which is Palace. Prince Edward Lennox and Addington Social Services. The owner in this case of the transition would be the landlord, and then you have the residents. The only recourse we have is our own municipal bylaws and fire department, as stated by the mayor. I think where, and I know this council, all of us sitting here, have strived over the past three and a half years to be completely transparent with our ratepayers, and I think we've done a bang-up job so far. I think the onus is now on county council as the owner, as the local service manager to step up and be as transparent as possible on this matter, not just with this council, but with all the residents of Lennox and Addington County. Addington Highlands may not have a unhoused issue, but their tax dollars are certainly going towards this issue as it exists here in Greater Nappany through the county. So I, the housing summit that we're having is a great first step. I'm very interested to see what comes of the RFP that they sign out for a housing study. Um, they're looking at a ten-year plan. Personally, I think they're five years too late in doing it. But, hey, you gotta take a first step somewhere. But I, I think, uh, and I'm going to make this request to their, our members of county council. I think we need to push, and if you need to have council at a county council meeting backing you up, I'm there. Just, just let me know. I'm there.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Um, is there anything further? A- and again, this is, this is a, uh, this is, this is a topic that's front, center in our municipality right now. So I think it's, it's been very good to have this conversation and 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 to try and understand where everybody's lane is, I guess. And that's, and for me, it's, it's been a very good learning experience because I've had to learn actually whose lane is what and 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 who's in what lane and where they should be, what they should be doing in that lane. So, um, i- it it can be sometimes complicated to understand. But I, I, I think this has been a good exercise to try and, to try and bring us up to speed because, you know, we're the ones, we're the ones that are answering the phones. We're the ones that are, uh, talking to the people that are on the streets, right? And and it's the same as every other thing is, is that, that, you know, where the, the, the level of government that's closest to the vault, I guess, is the best way of putting it. So Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Thank you through your worship. At this summit, do we know if we're gonna have any, um, uh, members of parliament there, anybody, anybody from the province there? Um, I understand it's about, what about forty percent of our taxes that we collect in Nappany goes to the County of Lennox and Addington. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, the deputy mayor, yes, approximately, uh, forty percent.
Thank you. So forty percent, so forty cents on every dollar we collect goes to the county. Uh, the county, as we've all heard, is, uh, responsible for this, this, and that. But it takes a lot more money than that. If you want to start building houses, we need to get the, the, we need to get the province on board. We need to get everybody together here. And I just wondered if, if we've heard of anybody from the province is going to be at the summit.
Mr. Grant?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I would add that in addition to Nappany tax dollars, there is provincial funding, uh, that is provided, uh, um, with ho- homelessness prevention programs and and other funding of that sort, which is made available. Um, I do not know, uh, if, uh, the, the first meeting or at the summit, that there's going to be, um, external parties, I believe, at this point in time, and and I stand to be corrected, but it is, uh, elected members and staff members of all lower-tier municipalities in Lennox and Addington, the County of Lennox and Addington, as well as, uh, Prince Edward, uh, County.
Uh, that's, that's what I figured. Um, do we have any idea how much money? I, I, I forget the exact number. I, I did, it was in one of our county reports, um, how much money the, the province gives to the county for the homeless. I think it's like million and a half or something to that effect. It's not, it's not much.
That I don't have, uh, I don't have the, uh, the numbers for. I'm sure that the county can probably provide us with those numbers, and, uh, I do know that, uh, forty percent of our taxes goes to the County of Lennox and Addington, and 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 it doesn't just cover housing either. It covers roads, it covers libraries, it covers a whole bunch of different things. But, uh, I think that forty percent is up and around the fourteen-point-one million dollars of our tax dollars goes, uh, is the forty percent. So, um, how that's, how that's divvied up at the, at our lo- upper-level government, I'm not sure. So, but I'm sure those are, are, are things that we could probably sort out.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Is there anything else before we look for a, uh, before we look for a motion? Seeing none, um, I'll throw some stuff out here, and you can tell me what you think of it. Is that obviously council received for information the growth and infrastructure differences between transitional housing and rooming housing report? And further, the council directs staff to research, and and I would like to see research operator. How is that defined? Where, where does, whose lane is this all in? And I don't know if, um, um, council has any other things that they want to follow up on, but, uh, I, I would like to understand. Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk is going to bail me out here. So go ahead, Madam Clerk, and you're gonna help me out here as opposed to me mumbling here.
Uh, through your worship, just having listened to the comments councilors have been making, I believe the Items Council has requested staff to, um, communicate with Palace staff about and report back specifically include, um, what degree of supervision is provided to these housing units, whether the operator of these homes is Palace or the building owner, and how that responsibility is assigned through their operating agreements. And I believe I also heard a question about what reviews Palace conducted following the John Street Fire and what changes they've made as a result of those reviews.
But thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, I should have just turned over and asked you right off the hop, so. Um, and further, that council directed, uh, staff to develop bylaws to license and maintain the registry of rooming houses, group homes, and transitional housing units in accordance with the perimeters of the municipal act. I think, yeah. Okay, I think we got everybody moving in second. And so Counselor Norrie, uh, Counselor Martin, um, is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, polls, motions carried. County Affordable Housing Property Follow-Up. And Michael, you're gonna speak to that one?
Thank you, uh, and through you, you, through you, your worship, uh, to council. Uh, so this is just in follow-up to, um, the, a, uh, previous, um, uh, resolution that council passed, which was regarding a request for gifting of land, uh, from the town to the county, uh, for development of, of affordable housing. Um, that was, uh, uh, the request was placed on hold until we finalized our land listing, um, stra- overall land listing and surplus, uh, property register, which has, uh, since been completed, and council, uh, resolved to, to not entirely gift land, but to give first right of refusal for, uh, the county to purchase, uh, at fair market value. Any property that are on this, that is on the surplus list that, uh, the county would be interested in pursuing. Uh, so staffs, uh, responded to the county's request in July of this year, uh, noting that we'd be open to having any further conversation regarding the matter. Uh, to date, we've not received any, any response, uh, from the county regarding that letter and that, uh, that offer. Uh, so just an update for council regarding, uh, that former, uh, direction that council provided to staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks, uh, thanks, Michael. Is there any questions or comments from Michael? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. I don't know, Michael, if the question is specific to you or perhaps it's Mr. Grant, but the last paragraph of this report was interesting. For council's awareness, the town of Greater Nappany CAO has received information from county leadership that their intention is to prioritize projects with other lower-tier municipalities. Do we know who, when, how many? Have we had any information? Again, for me, this is a transparency issue. I'd like to know where they're going.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hicks, uh, I'm not exactly sure who or where. I do know there's discussions about the, the gifting, uh, of land and and other municipalities. Um, I did receive correspondence from the Chief Administrative Officer of the County indicating that it was their intention to work with other lower-tier municipalities. Um, there, there was discussion about property that they own, uh, on Camden East, and I believe that that has been, um, earmarked for an initiative by the Eastern Wardens Caucus on Affordable Housing. Um, so, um, while they're not necessarily, um, looking to pursue this with us at this particular time, um, the, the land that they do own that would, uh, house a building envelope, um, for forty or fifty units, uh, my understanding is that has been, uh, earmarked for the Eastern Water, uh, Wardens Caucus Initiative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else? As a matter.
I guess more than a question, just a, a bit of a statement on this. Um, I don't like the idea, again, of Greater Nappany gifting property to the county because it's a, a county issue and it should be spread over the all, all of the municipalities, not just Nappany. So, uh, what they're particularly asking for was a, it, in my mind, is a relatively valuable piece of property, and, uh, um, the county should be paying And, uh, um, the county should be paying, the same as anybody else, as far as I'm concerned on that, on that issue. The other issue is, or not really an issue with me, but I welcome them dealing with other municipalities as well because I think they actually do need to spread out the services a bit. If they had some transitional housing or affordable housing in other areas, instead of bringing them all into us where it puts a load on our resources, uh, fire and police and, and, and bylaw. I mean, like I said, I, I would welcome them dealing with other municipalities. And quite often, and, and I know this for a fact, that there are people who are in transitional houses in Nappany who have been at least, um, that weren't from Nappany. So it, it should be spread around a bit more. And, and while I'm on that subject, I've, I've, I didn't mention before with the additional transitional housing on Center Street, how close it is to John Street. And I think the fact that they're that close together, like a block and a half or so, it's going to compound the issues as far as, uh, social activity going on in, in the evening. So it's going to be a short jaunt for them to get together, whatever. So, and I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just saying, while we can't dictate where they put these places, they should also be able to work with us a little bit and, and spread these, these around a bit more. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, thanks, Bill. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Counselor Martin. So we can certainly ask that in that particular area, I believe there's actually three to four transitional homes within a two and a half block radius. So we can certainly inquire as to that. And, and I don't disagree with, with Counselor Martin in terms of, of the land that was requested. I mean, with, um, sale price and, uh, uh, a legislated mandate to forego development cost charges, it would have been in the neighborhood of a million dollars. And our, and our view, uh, that we've communicated was that, uh, given that there's a single taxpayer that has their money diverted to different causes, um, providing that money from us would come at the expense of services we're responsible for, which, um, which Greater Nappany taxpayers have already directed monies towards.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the growth in infrastructure, County Affordable Housing Report Follow Up, Follow Up Report. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns? All in favor of that motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. Executive Services Encampment Protocol, One Year Review. And Madam Clerk, I think you're going to speak to this.
So through your worship, this report is brought to council. Because when we first were having these discussions with the community a year ago, we were very transparent that we were going to be learning along with everyone else how best to respond to the issues of local encampments. And we committed to coming back in a year to talk about what worked well, what didn't work well, what possible improvements we could be making and, and what has changed. So we had our bylaw officers, um, provide us feedback. We also did a community survey through the summer. Um, I have highlighted in the report and I will highlight again that, um, our survey closed early August and we did see our encampment numbers jump quite significantly during the month of August. So community perspectives, it is entirely possible have shifted slightly since that happened and wouldn't necessarily be captured in the survey. In broad strokes, at a high level, I can say that, um, while the provincial government has brought in some legislation specifically aimed at encampments, it does only provide greater enforcement powers to police officers. So it does not affect how our bylaw department operates. Um, and we haven't seen any direct impact one way or the other as a result of that legislation. I, I believe it was aimed more at the larger cities that have their own police forces. There is some potentially interesting developments in the case law coming early in 2026 that we will be keeping an eye on. And our recommendation at this time is not to change anything in our approach until after we see the results of that appeal that is before the courts. And generally, we believe the encampment protocol is working as best as it can. It is certainly working better than previous years when we did not have any rules in place whatsoever. But again, just keeping everyone's expectations realistic. When the encampment numbers grow to a certain point, as we saw they did in the month of August, our staff do not have the capacity to be out at every encampment every week. They really, through the month of August, focused efforts on, being really strict about, helping the fire department be strict about enforcing the burning bylaw and just being broadly aware and addressing any encampments that popped up in Conservation Park. We have been successful in keeping Conservation Park clear of encampments this year, which is a, a major win, I think, compared to last year. And if there's any other questions anyone has, be happy to answer them.
Right. Thanks, Jessica. Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
More of a statement, uh, kudos to staff. I know myself, I don't get the WTF calls and stops from people of what's going on in town. It's dropped right off. So thank you, but not just for that, but the town seems a lot better. There are pockets, as we know, but excellent job. So thank you.
Thanks. Bob Well said. Uh, I took the words right out of my mouth. So go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Thank you through your worship. What a world we've become where we actually accept this and have, as we've seen, have very little to be able to actually do to, to control it. But I, I, I do agree, the, the phone calls have definitely slackened off, the text messages, the stops on the streets. People are aware of where these encampments can and cannot be. And it, it's definitely working. I, I do, uh, want to thank staff for the, uh, the enormous amount of work they've put into, uh, making this and then for our bylaw and our fire departments and stuff for all the work they do. It's, it's, it's just a nonstop, uh, nonstop trying to look after it, but I, I do believe our protocol is working. And like I say, the, the phone isn't ringing near as often, uh, with the complaints on the homelessness. So I thanks all of staff and everybody involved for making this work. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Calvert, um, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to mirror my thanks too to, um, Madam Clerk and the bylaw department for, for the job they've done this year. I, while there seems to be some popping up, they're taken care of quite regularly. I witnessed it firsthand. I was down in the end of Queen Street the other day when our bylaw department showed up and, uh, residents were gathered there as well with me, which I talked to there because that was originally why it went down. And everybody, everybody went to their homes happy because that bylaw truck was there with Biden, Nappany, Greater Nappany bylaw on it. And they were doing something, uh, about the situation. So like, like everybody's saying, kudos to the town staff, even the cleanup went fantastic down there. So while we have issues, we're dealing with it. So that, that's the important thing. Thanks.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Martin. Is, uh, Counselor Hicks?
Thank you through you, your worship. Have we come up with a number yet? Through all, all departments, public works, parks, bylaw, fire? Did I miss any that have boots on the ground that, that we're going to have to budget for this year? I know I've seen some numbers, um, and I expect that they're going to be the same or more. Will actually have that on a separate line item for the budget? Is that, is that what's being proposed? And of course, also kudos to all staff for all the work because you, you folks take all the credit. We're just a reflection back to you of what's being said in the community. And so far, uh, to my knowledge, it's all been positive that we've, we've done a good job.
Thanks, Angie. I think, uh, Mr. Grant, uh, wants to weigh in with respect to the budget question.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I can confirm that, um, we have, you know, had a lot of discussion on this issue. So I would say that, uh, it will be a combination of adjusting service levels, absorbing in additional staff members. Uh, we've already budgeted for and booked an extra bylaw officer who's most time is, is there. So I think above and beyond, uh, that it, it's likely around $70,000. And then if you take a look at, um, all of the staff time and additional resources have been required, it's, it's, it's north of 200 to 250,000. But, um, additional resources that we can't absorb, um, would be in the neighborhood of 70. And, and the rest will have to be an adjustment of service levels in various areas. And, um, and, and bylaw being, um, one of the examples that they've taken a tremendous amount of their time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none, and, and I'm, I'm going to reiterate what, what all of council has, has said here, Jessica. You and the staff, uh, and all staff have, have done an absolutely marvelous job of taking a situation that really had no answers and, and given us some answers. So, uh, we appreciate it. I know the community appreciates it. Because we've had a number of conversations with respect to that. So, um, thank you. Thank you, staff, for doing what you've done. And, uh, we'll just keep up the good work and, uh, we'll, we'll find an end, an end to this thing at some point. But, uh, until then, uh, I, I think we're doing about as good a job as we can. So thank you. Uh, having said that, uh, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the Executive Services Encampment Protocol, One Year Review Report. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Calvert. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns? All in favor of that motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. Resolution Tracker Progress Reporting Process. Mr. Grant, I think you're going to speak to that.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to members of council. So, uh, our only non-housing related item today. So, um, I wanted to give, uh, council a, a window into sort of the work that's been going on and the requests that you've made of us, uh, through resolution. And a proposal from staff to make sure that you get, uh, a regular understanding of the items that have been complete, how they've been completed, those, um, resolutions that are in flight, so to speak, and where they're at. And, uh, so, um, so for council's awareness, um, the way that staff, um, will respond to resolutions is, you know, first thing tomorrow, uh, senior leadership. Each resolution will be identified, it will be tracked and it will be assigned, uh, to a relevant senior leader. That senior leader will either take it on personally or delegate it out to their, their team. And, uh, we will review, uh, the progress of those items, uh, at regular meetings. I think that, uh, there is room for improvement, uh, on giving council a line of sight on those things. Cause I've had, um, some conversation with members of council that they're wondering the status of certain things they might've asked for. Is it being worked on? So, um, what we are going to propose is that the Resolution Tracker receive a comprehensive update, uh, every two months. That every two months, we will bring forward a report such as this, uh, with the appendices, where you will have, uh, an outline of all the resolutions that we have, which have been completed in the last two month period, uh, which are in progress and where specifically they are at in progress. And then what have yet to be started. We could also take the opportunity at that time to revisit some to decide, are they still a priority? And, um, it will also be my intention, uh, to include, uh, in future updates, uh, updates on the mandate letters. I'm going to bring that report at the, uh, next, um, regular meeting of council to give council an update on where those items are at. Many of those have been completed. But I do think that, um, having regular updates, uh, with, you know, those status updates and the opportunity for council to review and ask questions, uh, on a bi-monthly basis and make sure that council members don't have to wonder, uh, where their issues of interest may be. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Uh, is there any questions or comments from Mr. Grant with respect to his report or the presentation before us this morning? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Grant. It's greatly appreciated. We've come a long way with respect to this. We started out with absolutely nothing and I think we've got a, a, a plan in place that, uh, is going to, uh, allow all of us, including the general motoring public, to keep their, their eye on the ball. So I appreciate that and all the work staff's done on that. So, uh, we will, um, look for a motion that council received for information, the Resolution Tracker Update Report and that council endorsed the Council Resolution Tracker Bi Monthly Update Plan. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns? All in favor of that motion? Opposed, the motion's carried and look for a motion for the bylaw to confirm the proceedings. The Council Corporation, Town of Greater Nappany, that special session held September 16th, 2025. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calvert. Read a first, second and finally passed the 16th day of September, 2025. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, the motion's carried and motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns? All in favor of that motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. Thanks, folks. Uh, been a productive, uh, special session. And we'll see you next week at our regular session of council.